There is more to me, Queen Eliara of Elf Guard, than my elven magic. Just as there's more to Geico than saving you money, Geico also gives you 24/7 access to licensed agents, online, on the phone, or on the Geico app. And while I am a mighty elf queen, I am also a mighty big fan of barbecue potato chips. Minions? More smoky mesquite.
Geico, expect great savings and a whole lot more.
Welcome to Nonprofit You, a forum where nonprofit stakeholders can share lessons learned and discuss the latest developments in the industry. My name is Valerie F. Leonard, and I'm a consultant to nonprofits, and I specialize in community and organizational development. I work with nonprofit organizations to help them make a stronger impact to their clients and communities. You can find Nonprofit You on Facebook and on Twitter, and I encourage you to follow us and to comment early and often using the hashtags #nonprofityou or #cccsi. You can also leave comments on BlogTalkRadio.com/Nonprofit-U. The chatroom is open, and you can post comments and questions. In order to use the chatroom, you must open a listener-only account. You'll find a link to open the account on the page for this episode, and you can also email me questions at consulting@valerieflenard.com. We'll be taking questions by phone and from our chatroom at about the 20-minute mark or so. The call-in number is (347) 884-8121. Again, that number is (347) 884-8121. Today's topic is Cook County Commission on Social Innovation update. We'll talk about the work the Cook County Commission on Social Innovation is doing to leverage public and private investment to drive social change. And again, we encourage you to call in with questions at about the 20-minute mark, perhaps the 30-minute mark. You can start posting in the chatroom and emailing questions now. Again, my email address is consulting@valerieflenard.com. And if you want to participate in a live chat, you must open an account, and the link is found on the episode page. Again, the call-in number is (347) 884-8121. Nonprofit and community development professionals, as well as policymakers, are especially encouraged to call in and share your stories and strategies. Today's guest is attorney Mark J. Lane. Mark is a nationally recognized business and tax attorney and financial advisor. He practices law at the law offices of Mark J. Lane, P.C., in Chicago. By appointment of then-Illinois Governor Pat Quinn, he chaired the state's task force on social innovation, entrepreneurship, and enterprise. And by appointment of Cook County Commissioner Jesus Chui Garcia, he now serves as vice-chairperson of the Cook County Commission on Social Innovation. He is also the chairman of the Chicago chapter of the Social Enterprise Alliance. He's an innovator in helping corporations, social enterprises, foundations, investors, lenders, and philanthropists leverage capital to maximize financial results while driving positive social change. Mark has taught both entrepreneurial finance and social enterprise at Northwestern University's School of Law. And without further ado, I just want to say thank you so much for joining us today, Mark. And before we get started... Uh, I'm sorry?
I was just gonna say that it's a pleasure to be with you, Valerie, and a privilege to serve with you on the Cook County Commission on Social Innovation.
And thank you so much for having me. Thank you, thank you. And you know what? I say this not just because I was appointed to the commission, but I think you and the chairman, who is Commissioner Garcia, you've done a wonderful job of, you know, creating a divorce... Am I saying... Not a divorce, hm, that's Freudian, I guess. (laughing). Not for me. I don't know why I would say that. I'm a single person, but at any rate, you have a diverse...[291.12][291.12](laughing) A very diverse group of people, you know, really smart people, I think, that come from different walks of life, as we were discussing, um, from a social background, as well as economic background, education, as well as age. So I think you guys have done a wonderful, wonderful job of selecting folks.
Well, thanks, Valerie. The effort really was to have a representation of all of the economic sectors that are relevant, as well as, uh, the commission needs to look something like the county it represents. So that was, uh, by design, and I think we did do a pretty good job of achieving that end.
Yes. And before we get started, can you tell us a little bit more about the commission and how it got started?
Yeah, well, you were gracious to mention that I previously had served as Governor Quinn's chair of the state's task force on social innovation, entrepreneurship, and enterprise. Uh, that was a term-limited effort. Uh, I wrote the law creating the task force, and Governor Quinn asked me to chair it and populate it and develop its agenda. And I found during that process that, uh, we were able to incubate significant, uh, social policy recommendations for the governor and the general assembly, and, uh, those results continue to, uh, derive, uh, impact socially the entire state, I think, in a very beneficial way. So, for example, uh, the state's first Pay for Success or Social Impact Bond was incubated, uh, in that task force with the help of a pro bono team from the Kennedy School at Harvard that I recruited. And that initiative is dealing with kids who are duly involved, those in both the criminal justice and the child welfare systems, and trying to improve their outcomes. So that was, you know, kind of the predicate for the Cook County Commission. And, uh, similarly, I wrote the law creating that commission, which, again, is looking at, um, the economic challenges facing the people who live in Cook County, uh, and seeking to develop, uh, knowledge-based, data-driven solutions to social problems that, uh, are the result of the many phases of poverty: unemployment, underemployment, public health, education, and the like. So here we have now, at the county level, a permanent agency, uh, which is going to make targeted recommendations, uh, of a socially impactful nature to the Cook County Board and its departments and agencies. And, uh, we're a little over a year old now, and, uh, I think you can attest to the fact that we've done some pretty important stuff and have in our sights other things that I think will have legs and, uh, improve the lives of the people in the county.
Yes, yes, yes. And I always tease you, and I say this, you know, without exaggeration, this is one of the few commissions that I know about where people are actually doing hands-on work. It's not... It's not really much of the staff, even though we do have staff supporting us, but, you know, the folks on the commission are really doing much of the legwork, you know, for the work that we do. And I really appreciate, you know, the fact that you structured it that way.
Well, you know, one of the lessons I learned at the state task force was you have to get the right people on board, and you have to make sure that they're gonna have the bandwidth to contribute in a meaningful way. What I didn't want to have happen was to draft a report that gathers dust on a shelf. I wanted to make sure we had people with sufficient expertise and passion so collectively we could make a difference, and I think, uh, that's already in evidence, and I'm proud that that's the case.
Okay. So when you were here the last time, you shared with us the definition of social innovation and social entrepreneurship, how they're similar and how that, you know, how they're different. And I'm just thinking, you know, for our listening audience, this time around, it may still be appropriate, because I think we use those terms interchangeably, and sometimes we get a little confused. So can you share with us one more time, um, you know, the differences, just to make sure that we're all on the same page for this show?
Well, I'll happily share with you, uh, the way I think about each of those terms and concepts. So to me, um, social innovation is the process of developing and deploying effective solutions to challenging and often systemic social and environmental issues, uh, in support of social progress. It's not the prerogative or domain of any organizational form or legal structure, often requiring, uh, action that's collaborative, of constituents across government, business, and the nonprofit world. Whereas, social entrepreneurship, or indeed, social enterprise, is the use of, um, business strategies by startup companies and other entrepreneurs to develop, fund, implement, and scale solutions to social, cultural, or environmental issues. Uh, this can be applied by a variety of organizations with different sizes, aims, and beliefs. And here in Illinois, we have the benefit of both low-profit, limited liability companies and benefit corporations, both enacted by statute at the state level, um, but also other business forms that are really pursuing market-based solutions to social problems. So that's how I would differentiate the two.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And then, when we look at some of the recent work that the Cook County Commission on Social Innovation has done, um, I'm very proud that we passed a solution to conduct a feasibility study on Cross Rail Chicago. You want to share with us, you know, a little, you know, a few of the details on the resolution and tell us how it came about?
Sure. So, um, this really has to do with, uh, the transportation desert in Cook County, where people who live in the Southland, that is, the south side of Chicago, in the southern suburbs, people who live on the west side of Chicago, these areas tend to be job poor, and they have difficulty, uh, getting to job-rich areas within the county and beyond. For example, uh, the northwest suburbs, where you'll find significant light manufacturing and assembly opportunities. So we wanted to kind of make it easier for those people to, uh, get to those jobs, so those jobs now become a reality, uh, for them. So the commission passed a resolution on December 15th, 2016, calling on the county board to study the possibility of creating a unified countywide transportation network to allow easier access, uh, to jobs in northwest Cook County for residents of south Cook County. And the problem, of course, has historically been that the various transportation agencies are siloed. They each have their own mandate, their own budget, their own turf, and, uh, we want to make sure that they can all work collaboratively to ensure that the county's residents are being well-served. So the county board unanimously accepted the commission's recommendations in February of 2017. Uh, they budgeted, I believe it was $500,000, for a study, which the Cook County Department of Highways expects to complete before the end of the year. And, uh, all of us on the commission hope and believe that the steps that follow will meaningfully bring down the region's unemployment rates, particularly in that transportation desert I mentioned.
Mm-hmm. Wow. And emphasis on the fact that they're trying to get this done by the end of the year. Imagine that, a feasibility study done by a governmental agency within less than a year.
Well, you know, the truth is, as to all of these social problems, Valerie, time is our enemy. People are suffering, and, you know, by delaying things, uh, people just hurt for that much longer. So it's... All of us on the commission are doing everything we can to accelerate the progress of the commission and its impact, and that gets built into the DNA of each and every resolution or ordinance we consider.
And, you know, I think this is really timely, because, you know, the city of Gary, you know, they're focusing on their transportation, and they're looking at the South Shore Line. So I see significant synergies between what we're doing here in Cook County and what Gary is doing, and it can only, you know, be good for the Midwest.
I think that's exactly right.
Okay. So I want to remind our listening audience that you're listening to Nonprofit You, and we're speaking with attorney Mark J. Lane. He's the vice chairman of the Cook County Commission on Social Innovation. We'll be taking questions from our listening audience, as well as from you in the chatroom at about the 30-minute mark. I want to remind you that the call-in number is (347) 884-8121. And those of you who are in the chatroom, feel free to post questions and comments. Okay. So, Mark, when we think about, again, uh, rail transportation, you know, it's come to our attention that in order to pay for increased service on the main Metro Electric line in Hyde Park, um, primarily, Metro has proposed cutting off peak service on the South Chicago and Blue Island branches of Metro Electric. First of all, I know that our commission has a problem with this, and I want to have you explain to our listening audience why this is a problem, and have you share an update on the work the commission is doing to address the situation.
I'd be delighted to, Valerie, and thanks for raising this very important issue. Um, in May, I believe it was the 24th, Metro proposed service changes on the Metro Electric that include reductions in the span of service on both the, uh, South Chicago and Blue Island branches by four hours and three hours and 54 minutes respectively on weekdays, and four hours and seventeen hours and 20 minutes respectively on Saturdays, eliminating, altogether eliminating, late evening trains on both branches, and eliminating all weekend service on the Blue Island branch. So what the commission...
Wow.
You know, it's really a source of deep concern. So the commission, at its September meeting, will be entertaining a resolution to urge the county board to call on Metro to analyze equity and discriminatory impact of potential Metro Electric service changes on high-need communities in the far south side and south suburbs in a formal study, and share with the public before any action is taken on, uh, service changes. So, uh, the idea would be that the county commissioners would urge the leadership of the relevant departments of the city of Chicago, including the Department of Transportation, and the leadership of the RTA, the Regional Transportation Authority, and its three service boards, Metro, Rail, Chicago Transit Authority, and PACE, to coordinate schedules, integrate services, implement fair transferability, and increase the frequency of service, upgrade Metro Electric stations where needed. The whole goal is for Metro Electric line to become the foundation for the economic revitalization of the Metro Electric service area. So, um, this is a resolution that is broadly supported by the commission. I anticipate that it will be passed. I expect it to be passed unanimously at the September meeting, and, uh, we will go forward and, uh, ensure that the county board gets this in its hands without delay and hopefully takes action, uh, in the immediate future.
And, you know, along those lines, you know, we just talked about the fact that $500,000 was allocated for, you know, a study. Is this an issue that might be rolled into the feasibility studies since you're looking at Metro Electric?
Yeah, I could imagine it, yeah. Yeah, the board has already acted on the earlier recommendation and acted unanimously, and I'm sure that the board will respond favorably to this resolution as well. Uh, it is no less important. Uh, whether that's accomplished in expanding the scope of the study that's already been authorized, uh, which is probably a practical and efficient way to get this job done, or whether, for some reason, it gets targeted to a different group, uh, to undertake this study, uh, the important thing is that the results of both studies will now be integrated, looked at cohesively, and strategically. So it's important, I think, that the, uh, commission, uh, continue to reinforce its commitment to fair transportation for everybody within the county, so they can get not only to jobs, but doctor's appointments, or other important, uh, destinations without the challenges they're currently facing, let alone those that are contemplated.
Yeah. And I think the feasibility study is really, you know, a good opportunity to look at those issues. I know when we were looking at existing conditions in North Landale for a comprehensive community plan, uh, we found that, you know, contrary to what policy would dictate, you know, where they were cutting the pink lines and, uh, you know, a number of stops in the pink line, the blue line, and bus service in North Landale, you know, um, I guess, I don't want to say urban legend, but, you know, forgive me, I'm a cynic, so I don't want to get you in trouble for being a cynic. But the reason given for cutting back those lines was, you know, we didn't utilize public transportation in North Landale. But once we looked at the data that was uncovered during the, you know, existing condition study, which will be, you know, the groundwork for the comprehensive plan, we found that, in fact, per capita, the folks, you know, who used the pink line on the west side and the blue line on the west side, you know, in North Landale and eastern West Garfield, would typically utilize it more per capita than other parts of the city. So I think that, you know, would be a really interesting, um, it would be really interesting to see what happens. I know we shared those data back in December, showing that there were disparities in, you know, what the decisions were on the policy level versus what the data was saying, and I wouldn't be surprised if we find some of that, you know, once they do this feasibility study, you know, for Cook County.
Yeah, I agree with you entirely, and I think, you know, there is, uh, you know, an ethical obligation and a legal obligation to ensure that transportation is readily made available to all of the residents of the county, wherever they may be. And beyond that, I would couple it with a very effective education program, so that those residents now understand what those opportunities are, how those lines could be used, how it benefits their lives. I mean, you know, we have to approach this, it seems to me, in a systematic way, and, uh, create real availability of public transportation services, and then ensure that people know that it's there and how it works.
Yes, yes, yes. So another exciting thing is, you know, under the leadership of Cook County Commissioner Jesus Chui Garcia, as well as yourself, Cook County is doing something that no other county in the country is doing, to the best of my knowledge. Uh, they're actually amending the procurement rules so that they can create greater opportunities for social enterprises, and that includes nonprofits. And this will allow for greater opportunity to actually compete for county business. So can you provide an update on that work?
Yeah, I'm thrilled to do that. I think this is a really important initiative, and as you indicated, this is a first in the nation, uh, for Cook County, and I've always thought that the commission's mission includes thought leadership. So to the extent that we can step up and do something that others haven't yet done, let them see what we're doing, and hopefully, uh, introduce similar opportunities within their locality. So I think this is gonna have a significant positive leverage, as well as what it does for the people in Cook County. But, uh, to be specific about what this is, in the July meeting of the commission, uh, the commission recommended to the county board, having consulted with the county's procurement office, uh, that, um, a social enterprise ordinance be adopted, and I was privileged to draft that ordinance. And, uh, it provides for procurement incentives for Illinois benefit corporations, for Illinois low-profit, limited liability companies, and other for-profit and nonprofit bidders that have adopted earned revenue strategies that directly address social needs by providing products or services to disadvantaged people, providing employment to disadvantaged people, or both. And let me... Now, when we talk about disadvantaged people, let me kind of identify what that universe includes for purposes of this ordinance. So, again, it would be providing products or services to these folks, or hiring them, or both. These folks being individuals who are mentally, physically, economically, or educationally disadvantaged, including, but not limited to, individuals who are living below the poverty line, developmentally disabled, mentally ill, people with street, uh, arrest or conviction records, substance abusers, recovering substance abusers, elderly and in need of hospice care, former gang members, or public benefits recipients. So these are the people who need a helping hand, and often, these are the people who need a second chance. So to the extent we have a nonprofit, a for-profit, by whatever label, and we're agnostic as to form, we want to ensure that those entities that are serving those populations get a little bit of an edge in, when considering, uh, bids, uh, that the county is entertaining. And so we're expecting the county board to adopt the ordinance at its September meeting, uh, and the idea would be to thereby promote the growth and development of social enterprises as an important means of addressing the social needs of the residents of the county. So I'm very excited about this. There is a, uh, social enterprise procurement ordinance in Los Angeles County, uh, where they have revamped its procurement ordinance top to bottom. But in that particular case, uh, every nonprofit is considered a social enterprise, uh, green businesses are considered a social enterprise. Um, it seems to me that if you're talking about a social enterprise, you must have an earned revenue strategy. That is, nonprofits who have established businesses to diversify their sources of revenue, and those businesses themselves now become an instrumentality of mission, or a business that's pursuing a market-driven strategy to address a social problem, business by definition generating revenue. So we're allowing... We're encouraging those kinds of entities to become increasingly self-sufficient, increasingly self-reliant, less dependent on government contracts, less dependent on, uh, government grants, less dependent on philanthropy, because, guess what? Those sources of funding are finite, and to the extent we can empower the social sector, to the extent we can empower the investment community and the business community to help us address these social problems, it seems to me we're making them be better stewards of the resources entrusted to them, and they're gonna be more effective and more impactful. So I think our definition of social enterprise is the right one, and we're the only ones to have adopted that definition, and I'm very excited about the possibilities here.
All right. Yeah, that is really great. And me, I guess, with my background, having grown up in North Landale, um, there are a number of, I guess, programs for, I guess, new entrepreneurs, but I think also, coupled with that, we don't always have the technical assistance that's necessary so that we have the capacity to really capitalize on those opportunities. You know, have you heard of any talk of any capacity building, such that when this ordinance is finally, you know, in effect, that social enterprises actually get exposure to, I guess, the technical assistance that they need to compete?
Well, thanks for asking that, 'cause it allows me to talk about two different initiatives. One is... Thanks, Valerie, terrific. Um, one is, the, um, commission has, in fact, uh, launched, in concert with Social Enterprise Alliance, a series of capacity-building workshops, um, and will continue to do so in the coming year. Uh, these are all over the county. We did one in North Landale, we did one in southeast Chicago, we did one in Markham. And, uh, the idea was to educate nonprofit managers about the opportunities of earned revenue, ways in which they could look at their organization's core competencies and underutilized assets to create a business that, in fact, drives mission. And these have been very well received, and I know that from this point forward, we will be including the procurement opportunity within that mix. Second thing is, once the county acts on, uh, the procurement ordinance, which I anticipate to occur in September, uh, Social Enterprise Alliance is planning an educational forum to educate, uh, those stakeholders who are interested in learning about this opportunity, about how it works and how they can become a part of it. So, yes, this will be... This will be on our radar in lots of different ways, and I think it's an important, uh, competitive distinction that the county will now, uh, be able to afford social enterprises that other government units and other counties and other states won't. So let's take advantage of that and build that, uh, build that opportunity and flex that muscle.
Yes, yes, yes. And when you talked about that, I could remember, you know, what is his name? Jared Boucher? Is that his name? I might be mispronouncing, I might be butchering his name. He talked about social enterprises and the various structures that nonprofits could adopt in order to actually engage in social enterprise. They should actually be more focused, you know, less on grants and more so structuring their businesses closer to a for-profit business. And, hold on, I... It seems as if we have lost Mark temporarily. Looks like we might have lost the connection with Mark. Looks like we might have lost the connection with Mark. Um, in the meantime, I'm going to turn on, um, I'm gonna ask a caller, um, for a comment. Hello, caller, you're at six three zero four five zero one nine nine three. And Mark, if you're in the listening audience, can you please, um, try calling three four seven eight eight-
Hello. Hi Valerie, this is Shelby.
Hey, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, 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 good. Uh, Mark will rejoin us. I think he lost, um, connection for a bit.
No problem. Uh, so, yeah, I was, uh, listening and it was, I think it was some very interesting points being raised there. Um, you know, I was, when I was at Sunshine, that's one of the things that, uh, was very prevalent in terms of like, how can nonprofit organizations start generating revenue, uh, using their current assets? And, uh, even some of our funders started asking those questions. And it's like, as we started looking to give money out to other individuals, uh, to these organizations, we also wanna look at, you know, your own sustainability model. And so, um, yeah, at Sunshine, we were looking at ways of generating revenue using our assets, which were the entrepreneurs we had there. And these entrepreneurs actually have products and services to sell. So, we were developing concepts around how can we get, um, like, sample boxes of our entrepreneurs and sell them not only to donors, but also to sell, uh, these sample boxes to, uh, people in our network, and also to promote entrepreneurs supporting each other by then having them purchase some of these boxes, uh, on a subscription basis. So, uh, as I looked at it, even with it, looking at, uh, just very conservative revenue projections, it was very conceivable to see that we could bring in an extra fifty to sixty thousand dollars a year just by partnering with the assets that being our clients, and then, uh, promoting their businesses by the same time, uh, and giving them an outlet to market and sell their products. But at the same time, giving Sunshine an opportunity to raise, uh, funding and capital to continue on their programs. So, yeah, I think that concept is, has been very prevalent, and it would be most nonprofit leaders to start thinking about how they can bring in revenue models to support the organizations. And- and you really think about it, there are a lot of nonprofits out there, a lot of people competing for dollars. And, uh, in a lot of cases, dollars is drying up. And so, uh, how does one create a sustainability model for their organization? And I think, uh, revenue generation has to be one of them.
Now, have you found that, um, your typical investors, have they been receptive? Or do they kinda look cross-eyed at nonprofits?
Um, yeah, I'd say, has it been very receptive? Part of it, when you think about it, um, if I am donating, say, even if I'm donating money to a nonprofit organization, uh, I rather, and we've seen this in a lot of cases, where a donor would rather, like, purchase something and, like, get something of value, and a portion of that proceeds, uh, would actually go to support the organization. Because actually now they're getting, it's easier to justify spending money on something of value as opposed to just giving money for the sake of giving money. And you also see that with, um, uh, organizations, like if you're asking a larger donor to, like, invest in- in some of your projects. And, uh, the Green Line Coffee Shop is a great example of that, where people actually, investors invested, and said, "We'd rather invest these dollars instead of, like, donating these dollars." Because there is a possibility of a return on investment. If it- if it just doesn't work and they never see anything, they've all, you know, in terms of return, there is a social return on that investment, uh, not necessarily a monetary return. And in most cases, people who invest like that, the amounts are small enough where they don't really look for it, they're not really looking for a return. A return will be something nice, but the fact that if you put something together, it becomes mildly- moderately successful, and you've employed people, you brought a new business to an underserved community, that alone is a great return. Now, if you can get a couple of dollars every year from it, that's even better. But I think the social investing part is more about doing good in the community as opposed to really thinking about what dollar amount you're gonna get back.
Okay. Awesome, awesome. I'm going to take another call from area code seven seven three six two four zero five eight five. Uh, we're still trying to- to get Mark back, and I'm gonna see if he has any comments on what he's heard so far as we, um, continue to wait for Mark. Okay, caller at six two four zero five eight five, did you have any questions or comments? Okay, um, apparently there are no questions or comments. Um, we are waiting for our guest, Mark Day Lane. He is the Vice Chair of the Cook County Commission on Social Innovation to rejoin us. So, apparently, he's lost connection. Uh, Mark, if you can hear us, please give us a call at area code three four seven eight eight four eight one two one. Again, that number is three four seven eight one two one. We were very much so interested in, you know, all the work that you do with the commission, and, you know, the lessons learned. So, again, if you can hear us, please give us a call at three four seven eight eight four eight one two one. Okay, Shelby, did you have any, um, comments? Any further comments while, you know, while we're waiting?
Sure, I- I was listening to more about the transportation, uh, side. And I think that's a really good point that was being raised. And that, you know, living in Naperville, I- I- I drive past these large warehouses, these large, you know, light manufacturing places, and they have "help wanted" signs all over the place. And I drive into an office every day where the unemployment rate is twenty-five percent in the community, you know, uh, and- and even higher if you start counting just African-American males between that certain age of eighteen and eight thirty-one, or something like that. I don't know the exact number, but I am, I do know that the unemployment rate can range up to fifty percent for many groups living inside the city of Chicago. And so, the question has always been, it's like, there are jobs, and there are people looking for jobs. And how do you connect those two? Because, uh, and it goes farther than, I know Mark was talking about just Cook County and just the areas of opportunity in Cook County. But when you start looking at like, how do you then expand out? Because you have so many opportunities. Amazon is building new warehouses out in Will County, and fulfillment centers. And so, how do you even take the talent and the workforce that you have in the city and create opportunities for them, where they can go out to even outside of Cook County, to other counties, earn money, and then bring that money back into Cook County to spend? So, uh, it, to me, it's not even just about, and I know you have to start somewhere, but, you know, that initiative is spread out all over the Chicagoland area. And the most important part is to be able to provide transportation. And that's an area where we see is really lacking. It's like, how do you get to these places? Even if you can get on a train and get there, it's like, how do you get to the job after the train? And the trains don't run all the time, and the schedules are not there. And so, it becomes, you know, it becomes a logistical nightmare trying to get someone from the city where there's a high unemployment rate to even like, out, you know, the suburban Cook County, and then even some of the collar counties. And so, I- I would hope that if you think about developing that transportation infrastructure, that transportation plan, to think even further, uh, where you have more opportunities even outside of Cook County that are just totally being unmet, that, you know, people will walk in and fill out an application, they will get hired on the spot, but they just don't have an op- they don't have a way to conveniently get to- to work. Because they would need, certainly need reliable transportation. And, you know, that's- that's tough. So, um, but yeah, I think it's a good start. And I was, uh, very happy to hear that, uh, initiatives like that are being created.
Okay. Now, question for you. You live in, what, Aurora? That- that's a, what county is Aurora?
Naperville.
Forgive me. Well, Naperville.
No, I, uh, actually, I- I'm in Will County. As part of it's in DuPage County, the other part is in Will County. So, the south end is in Will, north end in DuPage, yeah.
Okay. So, do you guys have similar issues? I mean, I- I always think of Naperville as not having low-income people. Um, but, but, you're laughing, but, you know, that's just my perception. I- I could be totally wrong. But do you guys have some of the similar issues? You know, if you wanted to do a reverse commute, say, from Naperville or Aurora, you know, in those outlying areas? Is that a concern, or do people, for the most part, have access to transportation?
Well, so, the- the transportation system is designed for the commuting to the city as opposed to the commute from the city in the morning out to the area. So, the- the metro, the regional transportation system is- is very efficient where you have bus- buses that pick people up anywhere from north end to the south end at various locations. It could be a church parking lot, it could be a library parking lot. But just all over the region, there are buses that run only during rush hours, and they pick people up and take them to the train station. The train station has, uh, enormous amount of parking. And we have express trains that take you into, almost every fifteen minutes, to take you into the city. And it takes thirty minutes to go thirty miles, which is like unheard of. You can't do that on the expressway. And, uh, same thing when the evening rush comes, it's coming from out of the city back out there. So, now you have, once again, it's very extensive transportation system that has been designed around people who live in Naperville or Aurora and these surrounding communities. They commute into the city in the morning, they do their jobs, and they come back out, uh, in the evening. And, uh, basically, between two thirty and six thirty, you can get an express train. And they, and during rush hour, they run very frequently. And so, um, and it's, it's, once again, it's a very extensive system that's been set up and is- and works really well. So, you know, you have to look at it and say, if we're going to do that for people who live in the city, that similar type of reverse commute sys- system has to be set up. It's like, how do you get out there? And are there pockets of, like, manufacturing and- and, uh, warehousing and fulfillment opportunities that if we can get someone into an area, uh, like, they get off the train, get onto a bus, and that bus takes them to those areas. And then in the evening time, those buses come back, pick them up, and make sure they get to the train stations, but also having, uh, a sufficient number of trains running at frequent enough where the people aren't stranded waiting an hour, hour and a half for the next train. Because then that just, it kinda defeats the purpose of, of people coming out to work because they start feeling they spent too much time just doing the commute. And I think that's the tough part. So, if you're like, doing the reverse commute going into the city, you know, the system is set up so well that within an hour from leaving your house, you could be downtown. And you can't do that driving. And so, that becomes like a-
Right, this is true.
You know, right? So, it becomes, because it could be an hour and a half to two hours, depending on what day it is. So, that becomes a very, uh, good transportation option for people. And so, and it's reliable enough where people can- can count on it. And even if the trains are late, they have someone standing outside the train station with, uh, notes to your boss saying, "The train was delayed." So, that's what I said, the system has been well thought out and well executed. And, uh, there's no reason why systems like that can't be set up to get people who are unemployed in, say, Chicago, Cook County, and getting them out to the, uh, not only suburban Cook County, but the collar counties, so they can, uh, take advantage of employment opportunities. And in like instances, um, these jobs pay more than, uh, pay jobs in the city. So, because there's a shortage, and you tend to get, the salaries tend to be much, much higher.
Okay, now I'm gonna play devil's advocate.
Mhm.
Like, wait, go ahead. Um, we'll finish your thought, and then I'm gonna play devil's advocate.
Okay. So, so, and I was gonna say, one of the downsides, though, is like, uh, the minimum wage in Will County is not as high as it is in Cook County. So, you know, that's one of the things that you have to be, you know, be wary of, is that, like, there are some positions, and usually it's not the warehouse positions, but there are some positions that pay, uh, minimum wage, and a minimum wage is not gonna be as high as it is in Cook County or Chicago.
Yeah, so, yeah, I guess my question is, you know, when I think about the need to actually develop the infrastructure to do what it is that you're proposing, what's- what's the incentive for an investor to- to actually invest in this infrastructure if these jobs are, you know, typically, you know, not high-paying jobs? Are- are there opportunities for return?
Well, here's what I say, like, those opportunities, those jobs are higher paying. And so, when you really look at like the Amazon fulfillment center, a lot of the warehouses, these jobs actually do pay more than minimum wage. You know, what I was saying is that some- sometimes, it's like, if you look at it, it used to be the fast food restaurants in the suburban communities would pay more than those in the city. And now, that part has changed because the city has a higher minimum wage than, like, a lot of the suburban communities. So, I wouldn't take the commute for a, uh, you know, a fast food job. But certainly, when you start looking at warehouse, light manufacturing, logistics, these, uh, these opportunities do pay more. They're usually in the area, uh, there are a lot of the jobs that pay fifteen to sixteen dollars an hour. And, um, and I don't think, I don't, the minimum wage in Chicago is now, what, ten and a quarter or eleven dollars or something like that?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah. And so, um, so one certainly would have to weigh the cost of transportation into that. Uh, but I think overall, part of it is like, either you're- you're employed or you're not employed. So, you're earning money, you're not earning money. Uh, and that, so, you know, those are kinda the things that, as the plan is getting developed, you have to make it attractive to all parties, including the people who are working, because it has to be worked a while to even wanna do the commute.
Mhm. Okay, well, you know what, it's two forty-six. I'm not sure if Mark is gonna make it back. Perhaps he had an emergency, and, um, I don't wanna talk your ear off, Shelby. But you- you definitely, you raised some interesting points. And I- I know you had a specific question of Mark, um, once he got back. And we didn't get a chance to go into that, um, part. And, you know, and I don't wanna, you know, steal, you know, Mark's thunder. You know, perhaps we can have him come back and, you know, share some of his insights on manufacturing. And I know that that's a spot that's near and dear to your heart as well. So, I'll just-
Yeah, yeah, certainly.
Yeah, I'll put that on hold for now.
Yeah, 'cause that was one of the questions I wanted to ask him, uh, because you really think about it. You know, one thing is you can start, uh, exporting your labor out to other places outside the city, but you could also just keep your labor there and- and build opportunities inside the- inside the city or inside the county to bring more manufacturing opportunities or, or the, you know, fulfillment opportunities right there in the city. Uh, we have so many vacant lots, so many empty buildings, that, you know, it would be a shame to say that, like, and I think a part of it is, is you start looking at investors. Investors like investing in stuff, you know, stuff that's being made.
Right.
And so, you know, when you can, because those things are tangible, right? So, let's, if we invest in the manufacturer widgets and, and, you know, there's a demand for widgets, I can make money off of that. You know, I can get a return on investment. And, uh, and building communities at the same time. So, um, I would certainly love to see, uh, initiatives that also encourage the investment inside the communities. Because, once again, there, then you eliminate some of that, those long commutes. And I think that's the part that really turns people off. And it just, it takes a special type of person that wanna deal with the long commute, uh, every day, um, to go to a job, uh, no matter what the job is. And, uh, and usually those jobs that are not paying as much, they have a tendency to have a higher turnover rate because people, uh, they feel that they're spending a lot of time and money on the commute. So, so they definitely have to figure out a way to work around those issues. But certainly, I feel that the most pain for the buck is creating opportunities right where they live.
Yes, yes, yes. So, I guess that brings us to other considerations too, you know, like education, you know, the curriculum. the curriculum that we have in our schools. You know, there's been so much of a focus on college prep. And historically, we've never had a majority of people going to college. You know, we, our economy has been built, you know, so much on labor, right? But now, we're going to a service industry and, and there's a need for, you know, people to really have some hard, marketable skills. So, I, I guess as we think about the manufacturing, we also need to think about our education system, you know, so that we're preparing people to, to take those jobs. Or, or is it that the jobs you're speaking of, we might not necessarily need all of that knowledge of logistics and manufacturing?
Well, I, I, I think some of those, a lot of these jobs are entry-level jobs. Uh, but part of it is, you need that in order to gain like work skills and those, those soft skills required. How do you get along with people? How do you navigate the workforce? When you think about it, if we have people, uh, individuals who are unemployed and they're not being employed, you know, they're twenty-five-year-olds and never had a job, you know, they, there are still remedial skills they need just to be able to function on a job. Uh, and I, I don't think people really think about those things. It's like, you know, you have to understand that you need to get up every morning and be on time, you know, and be early.
Right, right, right.
And that, you know, you can't take attitudes to the office. You know, you have to understand that you're the employee and you, you report to a supervisor or a boss. And, you know, how do you interact and handle tho- those situations, those communications? You also have to work with other people and learn to get along with them. You can't stay on your phone and surf Facebook all day. You know, it's, it's some of the things that people think are just, these are obvious things to people who have jobs. But people who have never worked, you, you won't, you know, it's, you won't believe it, how much they don't know. And it's, I think people assume that they do know. So, it's not always as simple as just giving someone a job. But it's also giving someone the skills to be able to become successful, you know, in an entry-level job. So, then they can start acquiring those skills to ma, to move up. And it's cause some of these, there are a shortage of, uh, skilled workers in some manufacturing positions because they re, do require a higher level of knowledge. It's not something that you would learn in college. But it's something that you need to go to some specialty type of training to do. And so, to start then picking those people who are very successful in entry level and then moving them up to these higher-level manufacturing positions where it may be more computer-based and, you know, and more technology-based. You know, that, there's a certain amount of training that, that, uh, will have to go into there. So, so it's really developing people in, in a stepwise fashion where they can work their way up into being good employees on every level. And, you know, having the skill and the knowledge to be able to navigate those systems.
You made excellent points. And, you know, and before we close out, you know, I always like to remind people that, um, and, and this is totally off-topic, this, this is a commercial for, you know, one of the projects that I'm working on. But, um, I, I just want to let folks know about an upcoming compliance challenge for nonprofits. You know, in my practice, which is working with nonprofits, helping them to build capacity, helping start them and run them and all that good stuff. Um, it always seems that all roads lead back to nonprofit compliance. In fact, over forty percent of Chicago organizations have lost their tax-exempt status between twenty-ten and now. And, you know, and that's a little bit higher than the country, but it's not that far from being consistent with what we see across the country. So, I am hosting thirty-day compliance challenge. And that's a series of four webinars to show nonprofit leaders how to maintain their tax-exempt status and what to do if they lose it. And the goal is to work with these organizations to bring them current on thirty days of completing the series. So, if there's anyone in our listening audience who might wanna find out more about this thirty-day compliance challenge, you can email me at consulting@gallaryflannard.com for further information. I'm sorry about that. I, I just had to, to get my little two cents in.
Nothing wrong with a shameless plug.
I listen to you, why I gotta be shameful?
Right, alright, that's what I, I tell people, I do it all the time. It's like any, you know, when you, when you're in business, you know, it's like you have to, every time you get an opportunity, you have to, you have to promote your business. So, there's nothing wrong with that.
Yes, 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 and we'll have to have you back on in about six months. You were just on our show, what, about two weeks ago? Was it one week ago, two, yeah, last week?
Just last three, yeah.
It seems so, so much longer than that. But, um, we were just talking about, um, the work that you do as an entrepreneur as well as coaching entrepreneurs. And I'm sure with the new developments that you'll be encountering over the next, you know, three to six months, you'll have a whole heck of a lot to share with us again. So, I'm really looking forward to, to your coming back. And again, it seems as if Mark may have had an issue where he could not get back with us. I, I know he would have otherwise. Um, so, we've got about five minutes left. And I'm gonna leave it to you to close us out. If you've got any closing comments about what you've heard today, um, you know, some information you think our listening audience needs to know, you know, if it's not concerning you directly, if, if there's other information that you think, um, folks in nonprofit or economic development or small business development might be interested in, please, please share that now.
Oh, well, I guess the only thing I would say as I was listening is just, um, certainly not trying to steal Mark's th- thunder, but, uh, he's brought up just so many great points. And just kind of following up on some of the points that he, he talked about. I know you had, uh, brought up the question about technical assistance for these organizations, uh, who are embarking on these social enterprises. And I, I really think that part of a successful program is to, to get a lot of these organizations in a room and pick their brains about, you know, what they need and, and, you know, how they can help, but also how they can collaborate with each other. I think one of the biggest issues that we have is that everybody, most nonprofit organizations like to operate like they're on an island. And, uh, and it, it just seems like it, it, it's tough to collaborate like that and to grow like that. Uh, and I think some of it's like, you know, we don't want anyone stealing our funding and cause funding is so tight and we don't want you to take credit for what we do because we have to report that to the funders. But I think they should be more visionary and, and think about how, uh, they're all in the same game together with the same mission and has to help small businesses or help the people who they help. And so, coming together and figuring out, uh, a master plan that you can then work with the city, state, or county governments to help implement tho- those plans. I think, um, I think most, many nonprofits would be a lot more successful under that model than the current model of let's just find our little fief to work in it and try to grow it as much as we can. Um, and, uh, I think as we see more collaboration between nonprofits and sharing best practices and, and really truly working together, not just, you know, meeting every three months and, and saying we're working together, but coming up with like, uh, more global strategic plans that include other nonprofit organizations. Uh, and, and think about it, if they develop social enterprises, then they can also start purchasing from each other and creating more cooperatives. And, you know, I think we don't see a lot of that now. And to start implementing some of that, I think would be great.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And listening to you talk, I thought about the collective impact model where each organization, you know, is doing his, his or her part, its own part, so to speak. And there's no duplication. And if you do this thing right, you're actually creating scale, you know, whereas each of those organizations may impact fifty, maybe sixty. You know, if they create synergy, the two organizations can actually, you know, address the needs of two hundred people instead of, you know, one hundred, you know, fifty plus fifty, you know, working alone in their silos. And, and again, I, I think, you know, we're so, so busy trying to watch our own turf that we don't really necessarily think about it quite that way.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, well, Shelby, I, I thank you so much. I, I know that Mark would have loved to have finished this conversation. I, I know that he, you know, he obviously had to run and could not get back. I thank you so much for listening. I thank you for contributing. And I thank every member of our listening audience who called in, every member of our audience who has participated through chat, you know, or, or listened. Um, you're, you're very, very much valued and I thank you so much for joining us. So, I'm gonna sign off right about now. It's three o'clock, Central Standard Time. And I, you know, look forward to talking to you each next week. All right, take care, Shelby.
Alright, you too, Ally. Bye-bye.
Alright, okay, bye-bye.